This time, we're gonna do our acknowledgements?
Yes. Okay, so tonight, we are very fortunate to be joined by some of the best teachers and administrators that the town public schools have ever had. We are here honoring them on the day of their, or close to the day of their retirements from education, although we'll be calling them to come back. It's a bonus, the state allows us to, I'm sure, like, you know, the day after August 1st would be like, hey, what you doing? Just a couple of things, you know, not everyone can come tonight, so I'm just gonna read off names of all retirees, and I'd also like to say a few words about the individuals who are with us tonight. So, Mary, Mary Gandhi is our principal of TMS, she's with us tonight, Stephanie Cassidy could not be with us tonight. Catherine Chirulley, Lori Storozik, Frances Sterling, Lucretia Fanning, Donna Boucher, Tammy Domian, Janet Sullivan, Karen Kyes, are all retirees for various aspects of the Talon Public Schools, and we are just so happy that they were able to share their talents in our school system. Tonight, though, we could have some people with us, and I'd like to just say a few words about each of them. And we also did hear from Lori Storozik, unfortunately, she was gonna be able to come and then couldn't. So, you know, I'm gonna, I don't know, if I can still read a narrative if you want, but I'll start with Fran Sterling, who's been actually the voice of wisdom for us for a long, long time. In fact, she's such a voice of wisdom, she was a very graduation speaker, right? Not many people achieve that great. Fran was part of the fabric of Talon High School, you know, and she's been part of the community for a very long time. Her students, she's got a wealth of knowledge, and she would bring history to life in the classroom. She always connects and continues to connect everything to real-world teachings. She shares anecdotes of her own experiences to help them connect, and they are vast, and they bring relevancy to everything that she's done for kids. A caring and compassionate educator, you know, all of the students in her classes really learn and grow, and they, you know, they find her classes and say that they find her classes very foundationally positive and welcoming. So that's a quote, foundation of welcoming.
They were.
I shouldn't know. I miss them. To her colleagues, she has a wealth of knowledge, she's able to relay the wisdom she's gathered from her years of teaching and her experiences in life. She mentors, she collaborates, she leads, she laid the curriculum groundwork for many of the courses in social studies department. In the end, Ms. Sterling is more than an educator, she's a compassionate, kind human being, deeply cared for, all she will be missed. But we know that she will be content with her loved ones on the Cape, even though that we know, well, hopefully she misses. Definitely misses her. Thank you.
So my question is, what part of the Cape?
The front.
Beginning.
Fifteen minutes from the Bourne Bridge.
Oh, there you go, you won't have to fight all that.
We had children, and when we used to just go on vacation on the Cape, as soon as they could read the signs, they'd say, are we there yet? So when we had an opportunity to buy something, you said, when they say, are we there yet, the answer has to be yes. That's what we did, this was the border.
No, that's, that's fantastic.
It was nice, yeah. It's actually in Bourne, Bourne's, which is interesting, and I'll be quiet. All the schools are on the Cape side, even the Bourne schools, and Bourne, most of Bourne is on the land side. So all the kids, whether they're going to school or going home, all the buses have to take all the kids to the other side of the bridge. So it's really interesting, so for the backup or whatever, I bumped into how many times, be it late, not in the winter or anything, but, you know, getting into spring and stuff. But all the schools are on the Cape side.
Yeah, we think we have to have a kitchen here.
I always just wonder, because the parents have a house at Nauset, and they use one of the parking lots for a lot of the activities, and they have the shuttles, and I was like, I wonder if the high schools ever get to just go ahead and use the shuttle to go right over to the beach, you know? But it would be kind of cool.
It's Bourne, and we live in the town, we have a place in the town of Talon, and then the next town is Fountain. So that's where, that's quote-unquote, that's where people, people think they're in Fountain, they don't realize a lot of times, vacationers, that Bourne is on both sides, it's a kind of deal. And then first you have to go to Bourne to get to.
Plus, I take that a little route sometimes, at six, you can't go over one way, then you have to dodge and go through, you guys are gonna learn all about that. How to go, because sometimes you gotta listen to it, it's like the Cape is just the place to be, because we didn't get to Mary yet, but.
I just want to say another thing, so I had you for AP Euro a few years ago, so that was definitely one of my favorite classes. So congratulations on your retirement, thank you for teaching me not to overuse the word "that" in an essay. It was a, it was a great class, and again, congratulations.
Thank you, I'm glad you liked it, and I'm still doing the "that's."
Okay.
And I count them, I think the most I've ever had to cross out is twenty-two.
Okay. I hope that wasn't me.
For some reason, students like to use the word "that," and they'll do, they'll say something similar to this. When the king was in his chambers, that was someplace he liked to be, and that was where everybody would meet him. Then they would think, what is it that we have to discuss, and you go, that, 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 so I start crossing them out. And then I do it in pen, so when you start looking at their papers, all you can see were X's, 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 X's. So I told them, read, write it the way you want, and then go back and start crossing them out, and if you don't need it, then, then don't put it in. So, but it wasn't just you.
Well, I guess that's.
I just use that for the speech pathology. What does that mean?
And so, but instead, you can say, you know, what's this mean? But anyway, that, you know, that is one of the things, so I'm glad you liked it.
And I groan, I like it.
What's there now?
Especially with everything that's going on with Putin and Russia, because I keep telling you that it's exactly the same, and after, at the time, Gary had an amazing thing taken away, so. It's too bad, you gotta.
Happy retirement.
That's great. So the next individual we're honoring tonight is Kathy Chirulley. She's left an indelible mark on Talon Public Schools. Her role as the speech and language pathologist, Chirulley has displayed unending kindness and compassion in assisting students in overcoming obstacles in their speech and language development. Ms. Chirulley remains steadfast in her desire to continue to educate herself, and she aimed to provide students with the Talon Public Schools with appropriate targeted therapy. In addition, Ms. Chirulley's experience in speech and language disabilities, she saw a need to help provide assistance and intervention in areas such as dyslexia and reading. Though her desire to assist children is, although her desire to assist children in overcoming struggles in reading, she's educated herself on many facts of dyslexia and has quickly become an invaluable district expert. Now she can become a consultant and charge twenty-five thousand times. And we wish Ms. Chirulley many years of fun, good enjoyment in her travels, and all the best.
Thank you so much.
So, Ms. Grundy, well. In case you were at promotion, I screwed up the official recognition of Ms. Grundy by recognizing her before they were gonna. But, you know, Ms. Grundy and I have joked many times about the interview process when she was coming in, and what I put her through, which is, which is enjoyable, right?
Absolutely.
Really enjoyable, something like, you know.
Or paraguine well.
The God letter, one of those, those things where you have to jump over something. The intellectual, intellectual equivalent of that. But Mary, at the very beginning, shined through, you know, she was obviously the easy top choice, and she brings with her, and has brought with her, different with her depth and breadth of experience that was really unmatched by many in our field. But she brought on top of that, a unique, I know, combination of compassion, you know, and patience. And, you know, over this period of the seven years that she's been with us, you know, being in a middle school, anything requires a great deal of patience as they develop into who they are becoming. And she has displayed that grace all the way, making the middle school, you know, a wonderful place, a wonderful place for kids, and having a depth of compassion and kindness that, you know, is not typical in the world, I don't think anymore, so. Thank you, Mary, for all of your wisdom, your experience, everything you brought to the table, all the accomplishments you made, and for, you know, not hurt, not for strangling along the way. I don't see any referrals to any others.
Thank the board for your support over the last several years, and thank you all for being at motion. It's been an honor to be here, I've loved every day. Every day is never the same at Talon Middle School or any middle school, and I've appreciated all the kids I've worked with and the families. And now I said to Walt, when I started, one of the board members said, where are you gonna be in five years? And I said, I'll be ending my career somewhere along the line in Talon and appearing, so it's just been an honor to be here. So thank you all for supporting me and all the trials and tribulations we've been through. I just really have loved being here, and this is a great community, and we have a lot to offer. So I hope that people recognize that and continue to support our next administrator, because it's truly a great place to be, so thank you very much, appreciate it.
Yeah, I missed you all. I do have Lori, Lori was going to.
I just want to say that I have firsthand seen Mary, and I just want to make sure I point out that the way that you really truly love the students was just always apparent in everything that you did. Your big lights up when they come down the hallway, and you hurt when they hurt, and that's very apparent. And Ryan says, congratulations, and we just, we just thank you. I'm very sad to lose you, but we're so happy for you, so enjoy your time on the Cape.
I will, thank you very much.
And if you ever get bored, we need subs in our district.
Let us know, let me know. Could you imagine, that would be amazing, it'd be so much easier than what I've been doing.
I'm just not sure.
I can do anything for six hours.
I guess so, okay. Well, any other questions, comments, accolades?
Thank you.
We do have, Lori was gonna be here again, unfortunately. And so we'll reach out to those who could not be here and then talk to them and get some of their cards sent in later.
Something, thank you all so much, do you wanna do a quick picture with his lead?
They're like, yeah, we're gonna pass.
Everyone just smiles, they're like, yeah, no.
Thanks for the. We don't wanna offend them, but.
Thank you all very much for your timely promotion to our local schools, because it really is hard to find people who are devoted and stay with us and grow with us. And it's not easy, it's, you know, everyone, I'm sure, had certain things that you can say along the way. But now you can enjoy your retirement, so that's really pretty exciting, a new chapter.
Yeah. As you have the Cape calling.
Now, this is supposed to be something that is for you and not to torture you, so you're not gonna have to remain after this point in time. You are, you know you can, without any, any judgment.
Don't feel bad, enjoy the Cape, and maybe I'll bump into you, because I'll be going up there pretty soon myself.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
For everything, I'll miss you.
And I just say, I'm so sad that the rest of our retirees didn't get to come, some of the names in that group, I mean.
Lori Storozik.
Lori Storozik, one of those teachers who my children, and I'm sure so many children will remember for a lifetime. It will be the password to the, you know, what was your favorite teacher, right? She was such an amazing educator in the way that she loved and understood children. Karen Kyes, the gatekeeper of Birch Grove, I just can't even imagine Birch Grove without Karen Kyes. Being there for Mr. Swanson, and, you know, Karen was so wonderful to volunteers, and was always the first one to help out. And tied all those Class Up shirts for the kindergarteners coming in. And Donna Boucher, an amazing kindergarten teacher who, I don't know how many years she did Donna Boucher work for the district. But again, someone my children didn't have the privilege to have, yet I got to know her because of her amends kindness and how she treated volunteers in this school, so. Such, such amazing people that we're losing would be very sad for us, but big congratulations to all of them.
Yeah, I mean, and it is important to note, too, that many of the retirees, you've noticed, have spent a long time, they've been in Talon for quite some time. So that's a tribute to, to you as well, because it's such a good place to be, many of them have stayed with us for most of their careers. It's a good, good thing to have had them, but it's also great to see them be able to, after many earned years, you know, go and retire, which is a very important thing, is they, people need to leave some time for themselves.
Especially in Cape.
Especially if you're on the Cape.
I didn't wanna say, because Storozik, Andrew used to call her the poetry teacher, but by the time Chloe had her, the curriculum changed, so she couldn't, she didn't do any poetry. So I'm gonna call her the poetry teacher one last time.
Dr. Will, to your point, we've got a phase of staff members who actually taught my mother, and she went to Talon High School, Talon Middle School, and I'm starting to see those folks retire, so to your point, you know, that's a testament to, they've been here a long time, and, and for good reason. And, and so I just find that so fascinating, that they're seeing multiple generations of families through their work, so that's just, that's just so fascinating.
That is. Okay, approval of the agenda, we are not changing anything, approval of minutes, I will entertain a motion. Yeah, hold on, Jaden, one quick, I want you to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the June fourteenth.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, oh, wait, we have it, yeah, okay, so we'll do roll call vote.
Aye.
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 Lauren?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's move to the participation. At this time, I think Lori, you're in the background, but I don't mind if you would like to speak, please raise your hand. And what I'll do is, I will call you, please, ask your name and address, and we'll be giving two minutes, and. We have too many times for the vision as well, just so that we can see it.
Hey, Ashley, just so you know, you guys are wicked jumpy, like, I can't, you guys keep cutting in and out. So I don't know if Christina can hear, anybody else can hear, but it's pretty not awesome.
Well, do you want to think it is, too, is that whenever there's storms or anything, the internet here is absolutely awful to stream and broadcast anything. And that was already an issue at the beginning, I knew, noticed that, that I wouldn't let anyone plug in. Just let us know if it, like, really goes bad, but there's really ultimately nothing that we can do at this point. I don't think, even unplugging it, didn't it work last time?
It worked when I was, when I was having trouble. I don't remember.
We didn't do it.
It just got better.
It just got better. It just, the owl does the owl, but it's, yeah.
Bad owl, bad owl, get better, owl.
Dana, can you hear now?
Okay, so we're, so we're good now.
I would offer public participation again, I, we couldn't hear, if any, if anyone online couldn't hear that it was public participation time.
Yeah, no, if you would like to speak at this point, we will put the two-minute timer on, and please raise your hand to speak, and then you just have to list your name and your address for the record.
Just have to give a second, there's a ladder, gonna try and get over.
We're doing the best that we can.
I don't see any hands.
I don't either.
I have to stop with Sharon, start again.
At this time, if anyone online would like to speak, please raise your hand, and I will call mine. No one's raising their hand. Okay, we're gonna close out public participation.
Just so you know, too, this is tough, because this, this is a bad night for the system. I can't line the, the arrow, it's just jumping all around as I'm trying to navigate it, so it's gonna take me a little longer to do anything.
That's fine, okay, no problem. Okay, so we will close it out, seeing that there's no hands, so we'll go back to the correspondence, go ahead, Jacob.
Okay, as I mentioned earlier, I was trying to say, we got a couple late-breaking emails that I didn't have time to put on this report, I'll try to put them on the next one, though. So anyway, correspondence through the twenty-seventh, that was yesterday. We had an email asking where the policy minutes are located, or asking where are the policy minutes located. We had an email asking if the board would be present at the June twenty-seventh LGBT regulation town hall meeting. Author expressed frustration that this meeting was held over the summer, women and families will be away. We had an email stating that the anonymous survey required individuals to fill out their name, another identifying information. And we had an email thanking Dr. Will for hosting the aforementioned Monday Town Hall. Four emails minus the two we received earlier that I'll cover.
Thank you. Okay, so at this time, we will go into, I can't even pull my thing up, just. Points of information, I couldn't even pull it up on my thing, it's like, literally frozen. So we will go to points of information for any board member at this time, would you say anything?
I just wanna say something really quick, I know it's not on the agenda, and I, I gotta leave in ten minutes, so, don't wanna get into the weeds too much, but in regards to like, the regulation and the policy, my only ask at this point is just, and I talked to Tony about this as well, is make sure we do it right and take our time. I feel like that, that, to me, that, that's a top priority, you know, but there is a lot of stakeholders up on Monday. Understand it was a tense meeting, I wasn't there, so I don't wanna speculate too much, I just understand it was tense, but, you know, I just asked that, such a sensitive topic that district moves forward deliberately and thoughtfully. Get onto it later, it's agenda, but that's still all I wanted to say.
You know, I'll follow up with what you had said, too, because, you know, I was not at Monday's meeting, and I know that it had gotten a little crazy and out of hand from what I've heard, which is, you know, that they're already, so in any case. What I do wanna say is that our district will always go through the guidelines through the state in order to make, ensure that there aren't any Title IX problems or anything of that nature, but it's only what we can do, what the state dictates, so, you know, there are the stakeholders like Tammy and Tim Ackard, and, I keep forgetting his name, the doctor.
Jeff Gordon.
Jeff Gordon, you know, they are voices at the state level to make changes, so we follow what is dictated to us, and if anybody would like to, you know, make changes, the state level is where changes happen. So, you know, those are your representatives, so you can certainly reach out to any of them about what concerns are that followed through.
Yeah, and again, the distinction between, you know, March eighth and even Monday, which, you, we're talking about the guidance document, the document shipment, and it could have been that ultimately is connected to the state of Connecticut's transgender civil rights, you know, information, so there, the board can't create a policy that goes against that. And to Tony Holt's credit, he asked that the LGBTQIA framework policy be created and put on the agenda, well, in March twenty-second in the beginning, and, and then May ninth. So to Chairperson Holt's credit, he, he asked that that was created, unfortunately, we couldn't get to it today, June twenty-eighth, but I look forward to, you know, continuing that conversation, a lot of people showed up, so it was very productive. Meeting Monday night, you know, as articulated back, you know, in March, and then again, to the Board of Education on May seventeen. Also in the three-twenty-two policy meeting timeline, going to admin, staff, and then release to the public. You know, ultimately, there were gonna be some people who probably have some questions about it, obviously, many didn't realize the state of Connecticut had the guidelines and requirements that they do. And so I, I think we had some people that, you know, were loud and boisterous, and in some ways, I think some people found me disrespectful. But I would also compliment that there were quite a few people there who were there to listen, to understand. And so I would say anybody who, you know, looked at that and worried about the loud and boisterous, you know, there were many people there who were not. And so I think there's, there's a lot of love in the community, I have faith that the people will be able to come together and have the conversation. And that the loud and hurtful voices, wherever they are, you know, will ultimately be not really as much part of the process with respect to being disrespectful to others. I think Remy, a student, a former student, shared in a policy meeting that he was afraid by what some of the individuals were saying. And so we were advised workshop wasn't a great idea, do it with individual meetings, do it with small group meetings, which is what I've put out there quite a few times, and people have been taking me up on it. You know, doing it in a, in a full workshop was responsive to the community and what a lot of people wanted, and I think overall, most of them were kind and respectful. And it was a small number of people that, unfortunately, were, were scary to people like Remy and others, and, you know, I think that the rationality prevailed, and many of them did try to get those individuals to, to stop. Having said that, you know, we did end it around seven, I went outside and I spent until eight-thirty until every single person left. You know, I waited until they left, Ms. Galchan can corroborate that and answer it and talk to them about it, if, you know, any other questions they have. So I look forward to continue to making clear, you know, what is the state of Connecticut's regulations and policies, you know, we're on civil rights documents on it, and, and then we'll see what the policy committee does.
Thank you, I have two points. One, in regards to the email about the policy committee meeting minutes, I emailed the town council, but maybe I should just say it here, because I didn't hear back. I think our committee meeting minutes and our agendas should be posted publicly, so they're easy to find on the town website. Because if you go and you find our board meetings, like, everything, it would just be nice if everything was listed there. So that was my first point, my second point, in regards to the community forum, I, I just feel like I didn't go, it was too last minute. I feel like avoiding the board process was a big mistake on our part, so I'm glad to see that we're following policy and regulation. I would like to see the draft policy. I would like to see the draft policy directly from shipment as well as the draft regulation. Uh, just in terms of what they give, um, uh, just to see what the nuances are between ours and theirs. Uh, I also think that the guidance from the state, that was from twenty seventeen and twenty eleven. Um, it's guidance and not all of it is statute, um, so I'd like to see. The board look at what's guidance versus statute. Uh, and I'd like to know where in the statute it says that parents should not be notified. Um, cause I gotta be honest, if my child was trans, it would be a medical decision between me and my child. And I would not want the schools involved in that unless I brought them in. Thank you.
The other members? Um, we've gotta wait a minute to speak, so. I don't understand the comment Christina just made that the board was circumvented. There seems to be. Some misrepresentation of that. I keep hearing chatter of online or from individuals. In my opinion, the board was not circumvented at all. We were given the guidelines that were reviewed on three eight. We, uh, every board member was present at the three eight meeting except Christine Griffin, I believe. We had the chance to discuss it then. We've had it on the dashboard since three eight. We've had the chance to talk about it, ask questions, bring it back up, et cetera, et cetera. So we were not circumvented whatsoever. Um, I also think it's important that we keep clearing up the confusion that. Or I, I don't know if it's confusion, maybe that's an unfair word, but any policy the board creates. Correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Willet, it cannot negate the state guidelines. The state guidelines of state guidelines, what we reviewed were, um. Civil rights for transgender individuals. Is that correct, Dr. Willet? So those, those stand regardless of board of ed.
That's correct, and that document is from Shipman and Goodwin, and that, what was, what is posted is the actual document from Shipman and Goodwin. I am going to comment on that statement as well. There are a great deal of misleading statements Ms. Ford just made and. In fact, inaccurate statements that she just made. And being responsible about that, you know, being a responsible board member means making statements that are comprehensive of full information. Um, so I'll make a comment after you're finished.
Okay, um, and then I was just gonna continue to say that, yes, I was, um, at the meeting on Monday. Um, I'm glad that so many parents, um, came out. It looks like a lot more than were even, um. Scheduled. Uh, I saw the fire chief enter very early on and start giving the, there's too many people in here. Sign and Dr. Willet continued past a half an hour passed. Um, the fire marshal coming in as he slowly kept moving forward in the room to eventually call it off, where then Dr. Willet. Said he would stand outside. He stood outside and he answered every single question and listened to every single comment. Even though he introduced the meeting saying that he did not consider himself, you know, a professional. Facilitator to have a lot of the conversations that he knew that there would be many people that would want to talk about. He still respectfully listened to every comment. Um, and I heard every word that came out of his mouth to ensure that there would not. Be anyone who could say that Dr. Willet was not kind and respectful to every single person there. And he did in fact wait until everyone walked away. And he was the last person in his car, so, um, I will happily back him up on that. I will thank you for that, Dr. Willet. It was not an easy position you were in. Um, there were moments where you could not even get a word out, but you patiently handled it. Um, and I think again, in your position as superintendent, you handled that situation, um. So well, so thank you for that. I know that so many people in the community appreciate that.
I also wanted to say that I was at the meeting, um, and Dr. Willet, you handled yourself. With complete grace and it was amazing how you handled that meeting and facilitated it with dignity. And you were respectful towards everyone and I appreciate you as our employee. You did a great job. And I'd like to also state that the, um, policy we also reviewed was policy. Prior to this meeting.
I'm not sure, Dr. Willet, if you mind if I just spoke very briefly before. I'm just not much, um, I've been kicking myself. I wasn't able to be at Monday's meeting. I was, um, committed to our local view. We back here at the Roth Farm, but, um, you know, hearing. We have a great town. We've got some great kids in our schools. We've got some great staff members in our school. Um, one thing that does not get said enough is our superintendent is fantastic. Um, and it's funny that I, we're, we're discussing this on, you know, evaluation day. It's, it's, you know, a big day, uh, for the superintendent. Um, you know, I think Jen had just made a great point, you know, a little while ago about, you know. Getting, making sure things are, 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 are true. Um, when we come to this room or sit on, you know, the Zoom and, and speak, because these are kids' lives at the end of the day. That are depending on the nine of us, um, to look out for them. And that's not happening. So I won't get into it any further, but I wanted to just, Dr. Willet, say thank you. I was gonna send you an email that night and then. Got distracted by nonsense, and so, um, thank you personally from, from Jayden to Dr. Willet. Um, and as a board member, thank you. Um, you represent this district. Pretty darn well, so pretty cool to be a student under you at one point and now look across you every day, every two weeks. Uh, and get to know you, so thank you.
Well, Dana, just so that Gloria knows that public participation is not, we're into a whole different section now, so. If you could just lower your hand and now can speak at the end, there's another. We should have another, uh, public participation after we get through stuff. Um, at this time, Dana?
Well, well, when the public precipitation time is up, what are we supposed to participate on when we have any?
I'm sorry if you're not, you can't speak.
Yeah, that, we are in, if you look at the agenda, we are now under, um. We're, uh, yeah, I can't think of it tonight. Points of information, which is only board conversation. So that's what we are doing at this time. Um, public participation, there's two of them. There's one at the beginning and there's one at the end. So, I'm just gonna keep on going. Yeah. No, um.
Ashley, do you want to clarify? But the public participation at the end of the meeting is a little different than.
Yeah, I'm, if there are two public participations, the first one is about anything, anything that you wanna speak about. The second one is to items on the agenda. So there are the two difference of the public participation, but we have to keep the meeting going and I went back a couple of times and had. Plenty of time for people to raise hands. So at this time, we're just gonna keep on going with our meeting. Dana?
Uh, thank you, Ashley. Um, I just wanted to just, uh, kind of respond to, I wasn't able to attend the Monday meeting. Um, but as a policy committee member, we had it, um, the draft. Uh, of a policy, at least on the three conversations, four conversations in policy, two of those. If not all three, we invited, uh, Tony as the chair invited public to participate. Uh, and we have talked about it, um, at a couple of board meetings, as Jana said, dated back to March. Um, and I, I do think that it was thoughtful, uh, to have that meeting scheduled. Although I, I feel like it was during a school year, it would have been tough with people's commitments during the school year, but in the summer. Some folks are upset because it's, um. Vacations and different things like that. Um, I think we just tried to do our best to afford the opportunity for people to speak and I think. Tony Holt does, um, the policy chair, he's done a great job at inviting public participation specifically on this topic. During a, um, policy meeting, so I think that that's kind of helped. Bridge a little bit of the gap, and I know that, um, we had, I would say. Probably half of our meeting today was public participation, and it actually kind of got done. Where, uh, we talked about having a, a additional conversation on next meeting, so much so that we might actually, I, I requested that. Uh, if we needed to add another policy meeting in the next month, but that's something that isn't discussed with Duncan, I just see if we can't get that on the schedule. Um, so I'm looking forward to continued conversation and I definitely appreciate the community for having. Uh. At least the, the meetings that I've been on, it wasn't there on Monday, but, um, at the different policy meetings and a couple of board meetings that people have talked to have been. Um, educational and thorough and very direct about, um. How they feel about this respective policy and our students in the school. And, you know, I really just wanna reiterate what Jayden said, as Riverdick's son, they're great educators and wonderful students. That were, that were trying to do right by, um, and do our best as a board, as a team, so. Um, and, you know, one of the, some of the questions that I had heard Dr. Willet today were, you know, in respect to. What we can override or not override, and, and as Jen had said, is there's, there's state guidance and we can't override that respective. State guidance, so we need to, to create our policies based on, you know. Nevertheless, it has been thoughtful and thorough conversations that has continued to be had. I know that Tom's gonna put it on the next policy agenda as well. Um, and there's a couple other ones we're throwing to the board, so I look forward to continuing that conversation. And I, the other reason why I raised my hand is I saw that, that Gloria's hand up, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention and not.
Thank you. Just one more question. So during the policy meeting, I think actually Dana, you might have asked, what, and I, it cut out when I was listening, um. What is the parent involvement? Like, I guess that's, I, I feel like some of the fears I've heard from people I've spoke to is if. You know, my child and, you know, even down to the elementary level, you know, comes to you and says, or goes to a teacher and says. I, I think I'm trans or I want to be a boy or I want to be, however that comes out. What are the situations where the parent is not notified? Like, what's the? What's the timeline? I guess, I think the concern is that this decision is gonna be made. You know, and it's going to happen in the school, which I've heard stories that it has, um. So I guess that's the concern and that's the question. So what happens with the parents? When would they not be notified? Thank you.
I feel like the questions that Christina just asked have been asked and answered. They were asked and answered Monday night. They were asked and answered, I think, on three eight. I don't know that this makes sense to ask and answer these questions again during points of interest. It's not a board agenda.
Well, I think that I, with, uh, Dr. Willet, wanted to say something, so if he would like to. Um, answer those questions, then he, so can, when he says whatever he's going to. But by your degree, this is not what this meeting is about and we certainly have a lot of other things to go through, so I'm gonna. Let him talk and then close it out and continue on, cause that's not what's on the agenda for today.
Okay, dude, I can, I can answer that. I, we have answered that, uh, um. At the meeting on Monday, um, also in the meetings, um, and as stated, and as explained. Um, what we, you know, the district, if a child shares, you know, that they are a student that is identifying as a. Uh, you know, it's a, a sex under than their biological sex. They share with their teacher, we say, I would like to be called, let's say Wendy instead of Walt, identifies as a female. Um, they would tell their teacher, their teacher would engage with the title one coordinator, and title one coordinator would then make sure that the. Teachers in all the classes are referring to Walt as Wendy on the gender that they identify as, because, um. You know, it's been expressed by the child to do that, and the state of Connecticut requires that we, um, do that when that situation occurs. Um, the title nine coordinator would work, would work with the child and the counselor and reach out to the family. The instances where that would not be the case would be anywhere where, um, there's perceived danger to the child. DCF one thirty-six forms required by educators within eight hours of any situation where a statement is made. That may suggest that the child is unsafe physically or emotionally. Uh, educators do not get to make that determination themselves. They are to, in any situation like that. Uh, file with the DCF cares line within eight hours, um. And then the DCF cares line either picks it, picks it up to, to investigate it and substantiate it, or they do not. Um, that's why in that document it cannot say shall. It would have to say may, because it cannot override. The state of Connecticut's directives to, uh, workers and teachers, mandated reporters is the terminology. Um, and so that trumps, you know, any kind of thing, any, anything else. We have to do that in that circumstance. They make the determination, they let's. Uh, but, you know, as it has been stated many times, um, we would be reaching out to families. Um, and then, uh, if a child's over eighteen, it's a little different, um, but under eighteen, that's the case. Kids under eighteen wouldn't be able to change their own records. Who require parents, uh, to authorize to change records. Parent, uh, kids under eighteen though can be referred by the, uh, the gender identifier that they, that they identify with. You, if the parents don't agree with it, we still, uh, are required to call them by the gender identifier. Um, that they have made clear as, as their, you know, the gender they feel they are. So that, those are the answer to those two questions, I think.
Do you have anything else to?
I do, um, I think that what Ms. Ford is doing is very misleading, um. On social media, Ms. Ford posted, um. That, um, you know, that a comment was made, and in fact. You know, I think this, this speaks to her knowledge that we actually did cover it. The quote is, um. This is what was said, and this is Ms. Ford's post on social media. This is what was said on March eighth to the BOE. As the governing board quote, I know that not everyone will love these guidelines, referring to the guidelines that we talked about in the meeting. That she is now quoting that we covered in the meeting. Um. Uh, but they're important. It's my job to do this. Policy needs to come in the ways that it will, but I need to do this, whether this is if the board. Uh, has written policy or not, I'm doing this. Um, and, and again, that was a, a statement about something made at one minute and fifty-eight. And people are at one minute and twenty, say, in that conversation, they would know that a number of statements were made prior to that statement. Articulating that this was a document from the state of Connecticut. And that the state of Connecticut document is the transgender, um, civil rights documents. So that, that was a misleading statement right there to suggest that it hasn't been covered. When on social media, she clearly posted that it was actually covered. She also goes on to clarify the exact minute and time that this was actually covered. So it's disingenuous for Ms. Ford to say that this wasn't covered in a meeting when she's been on social media actually saying, go look at the exact point in time. Where a comment was made about this. In addition, um. These things, these items were covered. I provided a document to the Board of Education on the dashboard displayed to the Board of Ed members on March eighth. I made reference to this document within the March eighth meeting. I explained in the March eighth meeting, I would have to act on this document as the contents reflected the state of Connecticut and the CSD expectations. Regarding transgender civil rights. It was also discussed and presented in the March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three policy meeting. If someone would like to FOIA that, because I know that FOIA is one of the ways people access information. We can provide all the information in that meeting, although I'd be happy to do it. It does clearly indicate that this was also brought up there in addition to some other things. So in the March twenty-second meeting. The guidelines were also brought up, the draft guidelines. In addition, um. You know, related matters were discussed and to, uh, to Chairperson Holt's credit, he actually asked that, um. We, we put together a framework policy in the five-nine meeting. You can FOIA that as well. A document was created and shared in the five-nine meeting. Happy to, to have that delivered too, that is actually draft policy. Different from the draft guidelines that was requested to be created. Uh, and compliments to, uh, to, uh, Chairperson Holt for that, once again. So this was, this was also discussed in that March twenty-second meeting, and it was different than the policy. Um, that was also suggested to be created. I posted an update to the Board of Ed on Mar, on May seventeenth. Reiterating the steps and actions that had been discussed would be taken on March twenty-second. Reiterating that we'd be talking to the administrators, going through it with the staff, and then presenting it to the public and then. In fulfillment of that, was presented to the public. There have been six Board of Ed meetings between March eighth and the publishing of the draft to the document. And at no time, as I told not to proceed with what I had outlined, I don't recall any communication from this board or anyone else suggesting. That we not go ahead with what was outlined both in the three twenty-two meeting and the policy and in. In the five seventeen communication that was sent to the entire board. So within those time, in those six meetings, at no point did anyone ask me not to publish that. Aside from that though, these documents were the state of Connecticut's, are the state of Connecticut's requirements for transgender students. So I, we could not vote these down or say that we were not gonna comply with that. Um, in addition to that, one of the reasons why we'd be working to do this in the timeline that we did is so that we have time to process through this in the summer. And that we don't hurt kids. Today, in the meeting, we heard Remy talking about how hurt he was by what some of the things that were said. Can't imagine school being in session right now and that kind of toxicity making its way back into our classrooms. Um, I think kids would be deeply affected by that, so it's giving us some time to respond to it. Additionally, June twenty-fourth. Additionally, June twenty-fourth, I provided information to the board highlighting the places the draft guidelines were communicated and discussed, including a question on the, in the March eighth meeting that was posed by Ms. Philbin and answered by me about us releasing those. Once again, clearly, we were talking about them in the March eighth meeting because Ms., you know, Philbin posted a question about it. So whether you're looking at Ms. Ford's social media post directly to a point in time in the meeting, or you're looking at Ms. Ford's question, clearly, they were stated. So we can't keep, um, you know, just because we keep repeating something doesn't make it true. The board has been entirely informed of this. It's clear from even Ms. Ford's post that we were informed of this making reference to it. Ms. Philbin asked questions about it. Multiple communications have been provided to the board, and six meetings have gone by without anyone telling you not to post the draft items for the teachers. And, oh, Mr. Holt took out a policy in the policy committee meeting, three twenty-two, five-nine, and, you know, six twenty-eight, even though we didn't get to it. So it's disingenuous and actually irresponsible, and this needs to stop.
Well, I agree with you. Clarification of reality is certainly important. Is this timeline posted for others to view as well, just in case they want to see how things have, um?
Well, at this point now, you know, as I said, within the Monday workshop, there's a series of documents put up so that people can see. Even they can see that the state of Connecticut is continuing to put out information. And so, you know, I'll put that in as much of a sequential order as I can as well. Yes, I, I post the timeline of the boards where, of it, it has been posted.
Yes, but it's good for the panic as well to see. Go ahead.
And, and Dr. Will did say that, um, he would be creating like a pull-down tab or a pull-down page just for these issues to update the public so that they are fully up to date knowing what's happening.
Now, unfortunately, I hate, I don't like being in the position of responding like this, but, you know, at this point, I feel like there needs to be clarity, and I need to call each time something.
Oh, I think that's a good way of moving forward. Anyone else?
Sure. I'll say one more thing. I would like to respectfully ask my colleagues on the board to please not post on social media or have discussions where you speak or the board as a whole. There's just been too many things that have been incorrect lately. I don't do it to you. Please don't do it to me.
Okay. So let's close that out, and let's move on to, what do we have next? Miss probably committee liaison report, because everything else is under, which is all sorts. We don't have, and we do not have student representatives. Nothing is under the superintendent's report. Are you sure that that forty ninety does not close, close to just go under first read?
I'm not entirely sure.
Okay, go on. If we get to board action, we have to move that, that's fine. Um. Committee liaison report, so it sounds like policy did meet today. Um.
Yeah, I apologize. I missed it.
Well, we don't have that, Dr. Will. Oh, Dana, policy. Give a quick.
Um, yeah, a quick synopsis was we had quite a bit of public participation. Um, you know, reviewing this very topic. And there is a couple of policies that we've, uh, pushed, we put to the, that will be on the next board agenda, I'm assuming. There was, uh, what, three of you, Dr. Will, and that, or two? And then we, um, are going to continue this, this conversation that we've been talking all night about already, um, at the next policy meeting. Again, we might try to sneak an additional policy meeting in this month to try to have earlier conversation to get it to the, to the next board. But that would be whatever Tony and Jen can squeeze on the, on the calendar. If not, it'll be top bit, line item one for our next meeting. It was a good meeting, and the, the public was very respectful and educational and participated in it, so.
Perfect. Um, negotiations?
Finished? The parent educator negotiations? We will be bringing that to the board soon.
And starting teachers.
We will be starting teachers in July. Um, we had communications on Monday at three o'clock before the Monday night meeting, where we also discussed the, um, document that was discussed at Monday night's meeting. Um, it is the second time that we have discussed it in communications. Um, we, um, we just talked about, um, how Dr. Will was going to, um, handle the workshop, um. The message, you know, some of the highlights he was going to give, but it was really, you know, about the Q and A for parents and guardians to be able to, um, ask questions. And get the answers that he could provide them. We talked about the, um, the individual, you know, page or, or website that he would like to create with all the information. Uh, we discussed that. Lisa would be in attendance to record all of the questions, so that in case there were things that Dr. Will couldn't answer or get to, an FAQ would be assembled if necessary. Um, we talked about, um, that the, these, you know, we will continue to have, um, workshops, communications. Um, hopefully, again, bring in qualified individuals to have some of the community conversations. Um, we talked about, you know, discussing how it will be communicated to students. And, you know, that we'd, we'd also like to handle some other, um, concerns such as bullying, you know, in this manner, maybe having some workshops and having, um, some resources online available to just enhance the communication on all of these topics that we know are so important to our staff and our students and our community.
FFC, they did not meet.
No, it's canceled as well.
Yeah, okay. So I'm not missing anybody, right? Not everybody. Okay. Um, I do not have a report. Um, let's go to board action. So the fifty-four oh two meal charging, this one I know that we saw. I just don't remember that. You have to share it. It's right under that.
So, uh, we did have a, or a viewing this. Nothing's really changed here. It's just giving people a chance to consider. It's originally a preview on five point five twenty-four. It's recommended that we do do this, uh, because there are just some nuances to letting people know that we're gonna, you know, be proceeding, uh, because the state of Connecticut asks us to, you know, with collecting the funds and that, um, and that we, you know, there are students, we're not going to be able to tell them that they have a balance, or we're gonna, you know, because there, there's an important, um, in consideration of not shaming them. Uh, so it'll be that parents may not be able to ask their kids where they're at. Sometimes in the past, the, the child will come home and say, hey, then we're, we've run out, you know, can you fill it up? Um, we'll have to be reaching out to parents directly, you know, with our, you know, communication systems as we have this spring and, uh, be more assertive about it. Um, so that's, uh, that's important, just to lay out for people, uh, what the situation is and why it is happening, the way it's happening, and so on. And so that's why this is here, just to kind of, you know, make sure we codify it, people are aware, and this is what we have to do.
Okay. So at this time, I will entertain if you can scroll down to the, I'll scroll up and actually scroll up. There you go. I will entertain the motion that they would like to. Make it.
Uh, Jacob, I move to approve policy fifty-four oh two meal, uh, meal charging. Seconded.
Okay, and discussion, do the board members have any other questions or comments during this time?
Say, you know, we talked a lot about this in FFC, um, you know, an outstanding balance of about twelve hundred dollars. I'd say that seems like it's, it's okay, given, given the concern that we had. I mean, obviously, we'd love it to be zero, but that's not terrible. So hopefully, hopefully it stays, stays low and manageable.
Yeah, yeah, we've made progress. Okay, that's good to hear.
Okay. So at this time, um, we'll do a roll call vote, um, sort of with Jaden.
Aye.
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 Um, Ford?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
On my eye as well, therefore this passes unanimously. Okay, let's move on to the forty ninety. This one, I, I believe is a first read. I don't remember this being.
Yeah, I don't remember that.
You know, so even though this is under board action, let's, uh, go ahead and go through it for the first read, because we won't be.
Yeah, these, these are fairly straightforward, um, adjustments. We'll notice that, um, the knees, as always, uh, attempt to make the blue, uh, strikeout, and then there's a yellow add. Um, so colors in combination of italics, yellow italics is add, will strike out. It's just updating our policy to the, the most recent, uh, language. Um, so there's, there are some small changes, um, and most of them are just clarifications, uh, updating of, uh, certain references to agencies, and some of the, um, terminology, you know, adding school counselor, adding terminology like special program. They don't use go, guidance counselor anymore. They use more school counselor, although some places still use guidance. So it's just clarifying and making sure that they're covering all the bases. Um, you know, also adding things like special program, because it's not just middle school, high school, et cetera. We have things like leave and so on. Um, and expanded definition of sexual assault, um, you know, and, uh, expanded, uh, clarifications of statutory mandated reporters, um, similar things. I'm just making sure all of the language is updated in there. The report, uh, requirements, once again, um, is making sure those are codified in there very clearly. The state of Connecticut already has these requirements. It's just kind of mirroring that again, um, making sure that they match up. And then, uh, similarly smaller language changes, uh, the big, the, the big difference here is just making sure that sexual, or, you know, assault is highlighted. You know, and that it is, uh, you know, a very explicit part of the policy is, oh, it has been a requirement and is a requirement. You know, reporting in DCF one thirty-sixes and that type of thing. Um, but, you know, we're just making sure it's highlighted here. So that it stands out. Um, let's see. And, um, the, you know, the timelines are also highlighted here too. And so just to make sure people know what those are, has to happen and that type of thing, or, or at least codify that. At the beginning of every year, we talk about this. There's mandated reporter training for all staff. So the staff is given this every year, but, um, this, this just make sure we're highlighting it, also using the, the his, her, their, you know, updating the language accordingly in that way, based on, um, the conversations we're gonna have and so on. So that's essentially it. Um, it also defines child, and that's the shift when, you know, add. But all of this is really shifting, and good when adding, and, and modifying, updating language, uh, DCF language. And it's making sure that it's current to the language of sexual assault.
Okay. Um, can you ensure that board members do get a copy of this to review prior to voting? They just go through all the yellow parts, because there is quite a bit.
Yeah, it's on, uh, yeah, yeah. Definitely. It's in the packet. All of this is in the packet.
Okay. Oh, maybe because I hope that the revised one, that probably is why, and the revised doesn't count.
Yeah, so all of this is actually in the package, public can see it, you can see everybody has it.
Okay, well, that was my mistake.
Which would have been the same, in the same general way we do it.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem, yeah.
Just a quick note, yeah. No, uh, I just want, I know he's not here. I wanted to thank Tony in the minutes at the policy committee for, for looking at that site, you know, time to time. It's very important to, to review and make sure you have the most up-to-date language, um, you know, especially given it's such a, such an important part of our job as for tech students. So, um, want, want to give them a, a special thank you for that, because obviously there was, um, a lot of good, good work here in, in spelling things out uh, very specifically. So definitely good.
Okay, yeah. But we will use this as a first day of record and do, go ahead.
Agreed. Um, I would, this is just a recommended, yeah. I would recommend, you know, everybody who has children, uh, who works with children, um, you know, just to familiarize yourself with what it is to be a mandated reporter. Uh, going into this past school year, I, I severely underestimated, you know, the lengths you go to in order to make sure a child is safe. And, uh, Sophie, I know you're familiar with, uh, this as well. So I would just, you know, recommend familiarizing yourself with this text, because, um, you know, you know, it's, it's important, you know, stay informed.
Okay, uh, let's move on to update on field trips.
Uh, so actually, it's funny that this one, all of it fell into action. Uh, there's no action required for this.
That's why.
Yeah, I'm sure. But, but, um, basically, I said that I would be giving everybody a heads up about field trips as they came to me instead of just at the end of the year. So this doesn't represent all field trips. Um, it represents, you know, what came to me at this point in the year, and I'll continue to bring them, you know, as they come up. So we did have a couple of field trips come up, and I approved them, the Decera Regional Power Trip Conference, Washington trip for next year. This is a business academy trip, the tour of, uh, behind-the-scenes Patriots place, Gillette Stadium. I think we put a video about that out fairly recently. Uh, girl soccer team building trip to Vermont. Um, so these are the latest ones that came up that are overnight trips, and typically I will put those in front of the board. Um, in the past, distant past, it was, you know, one big thing, but I'm doing it as they come, and this is, these are the ones that have come up recently. No action is required, but I'm just informing the board of, you know, to be aware.
No, thank you for that. So kind of cool. Okay, let's move on to, now this is actually action, letter to the legislature.
It is, so.
This is technically the second read, so this is going to be what we are voting on tonight.
Yeah, now, what was requested, uh, also in that meeting is that I, you know, go through and update the language to the state of Connecticut. So I have, uh, done so. You know, to what the state has passed to the greatest extent that we could extrapolate that. So this document has been, um, updated to that, um, to that language. I'll probably, you know, do some spacing and some tactic things. But, um, if you take a look at, uh, the language with respect to specifically the unfunded mandates, these are the pieces that changed, if there was a change at all, and the change that occurred was I took anything off that, uh, the legislature didn't actually pass. So what you see here now listed are unfunded mandate or, or impacting, uh, decisions that could end up costing the district and the town additional money that actually still are under consideration or are part of the budget, you know, and laws that were passed. We're still waiting for some clarifications too, though, because they can sometimes put things in language as articulations and implementers that we aren't, you know, fully are, you know, able to, uh, to get until even the point of that, you know, that being done. But these are pretty much where we're at as of this moment in time. So if we do send this on the twenty-eighth, or the twenty-ninth tomorrow, I'll put it on, on letterhead, clean up any of the formatting, and send it, you know, this, this should be accurate to what the situation is right now.
And I'd just like to clarify too, because we can certainly vote on this, but if there are board members, we can send out an email just to make sure that board members do want to sign their name to it, because I don't feel as though just because a majority will say yes to it, that means that all board members have to add their name to it. I don't feel that that's appropriate. Regardless, I've never been one about majority, that's it. Like, we just, you, everyone has their voice, they can sign a letter or they can't. So it, like, it is board action, because I'd like to know if you would like your name on this. Um. So I don't know how, we would have to technically write a, what do you have here? A motion to approve the board letter, yeah.
Well, what I'll do is I can have Jen send out a, a little form that says, yes, I want my name on this letter, or no. It'll just be a Google form saying yes or no.
Okay. That's fine, I'll think. But if we're in the room right now, um, we can go through.
But if you approve it, you know, for tonight at least, we'll, I'll know to move forward.
Correct. So that's how I just want to make sure, though, that it's written into the Board of Ed action part, um, just saying that we approve of this letter, and then you can add your name somehow. It's not necessarily, it's written in there, because I don't want to just send it with people not in this room saying that they are okay with it. I think that makes sense to everyone.
Right, so, you know, I think in a way, you, you have the motion to approve utilizing the letter, and then it's a matter of me following through with your request. I don't know that you need to make that part of the motion if you don't want to, because I'm thinking of how, how to word that.
Well, I think we just need to add motion to approve the board of letter, uh, reletter to the legislature, but, uh, making adjustments based on the bill status and direct, some communication to them. Maybe, uh, indirect, the superintendent to send the communication if in agreement.
To confirm, or what, you know, which, which board members would like to be added.
Members to have them confirm whether they wish to or don't.
And we'll, and we'll confirm with each board member whether they would like their name on the letter accordingly. Just add that to the end, and we'll confirm with each, you know, and. Just add that to the end and we'll confirm with each, you know, and you know, superintendent's office will confirm with each board member whether they want their name added to this letter according.
Perfect. So who wants to make that motion? You do.
I can't read it from here. I'm embarrassed to say.
Having trouble to line it up on this.
Uh, motion to approve the BOE letter to the legislature possession six twenty eight point three meeting, making adjustments based on the bill. Data and direct the superintendent to send the communication to relevant state community jurors as well as town. Elected representative and state legislator Senator Gordon, Representative Acker and Representative Nuccio. You know, last part you just said, which was that we will be confirming.
Superintendent's office will reach out to each board member.
The superintendent's office will reach out to each board member to confirm that they would like their name.
Put it on it accordingly.
In signature of the letter.
All right, you guys Lisa, right? Who's going second?
Second.
Okay, discussion, any discussion?
I just want to say that, oh. Jen.
I didn't think.
I just want to say, um, we really worked hard on this in the communication committee. Jen did a great job and also Dr. Will did a fantastic job with breaking down all those mandates and putting them together for us. Yes, can you understand you did Dr. Will at educating us through this whole process, taking us through all the different mandates that kept moving and changing. Explaining to the best of his ability how that would affect the district and for composing this wonderful letter. Thank you.
Oh, thank you guys. I had a couple. Thoughts on it. All of these bills, if you go to Bill Tractor, the only one that was passed was the Title IX compliance. Everything else is, is dead. Uh, so I don't know how applicable they are anymore. Uh, and my other suggestion is. We would send it to the education committee and the appropriations committee. Just because those are the, if the bills go back there for any reason, or if that's where they are, you know, that's who's formulating. These bills that are going to the floor. My other thought is. I'm not going to sign it with the Title IX bill on there. I don't think that adds a cost to the district. And I think it's important for the protection of our students. Thank you.
Ms. Ford is referring to the version that is in the original packet. The Board of Ed was given version two, which was the updated version. It does not have Title IX.
Okay, so this version does not have Title IX?
In the, in the, it was updated and provided to, you know, the Board of Education this afternoon. As I had stated and stated, you know, in the communications meeting, we would be updating this with, you know, with the representatives of the legislature. Is discussing it with them. So what's on the screen now is the updated version. That's the one you're approving. Uh, I think Ms. Ford is referring to the one originally posted, which was the original letter. This one is reflective of, you know, we'll be checking it again, should be reflective of the current status. For instance, even though something like this was changed, one of the things that they didn't do is the TRS six eighty eight, six eight eight one failed. But the part about the TRS section one seventeen of the made budget bill six four nine one. That puts the added surplus money through school year twenty four to the state employee fund as a first priority and the teacher's retirement fund as a second priority. Is problematic. I don't think Ms. Ford's read would, you know, was on the dashboard.
Dana.
Um, I'm sorry, just to confirm, this is, uh, the one that we discussed at last meeting was the one that we decided to not approve. Because you were making those respective adjustments for us to look at tonight. So this document is the one from the last meeting we adjusted and has the updated. So this one, as far as I understood, was a hundred percent accurate and correct.
Right.
I just want to be crystal clear.
This was shared for this meeting, understanding that we would be needing time to update it and that was published at a point where we still have.
Correct, but the read that we did last meeting, two weeks ago, was the previous version. So this is the updated version in the Board of Ed dashboard for tonight's meeting. I felt comfortable, I felt comfortable signing that.
Send out an email, yeah, send out an email, Board of Ed dashboard, understanding that we would. And then any other tweaks, you know, I'll do any more check where it's set. Um, to make sure that, you know, some of these tweaks, what other tweaks may have to be made to make sure it's accurate.
No, I do recall our peer, our peers, I remember several of us had said at the meeting last, two weeks ago, that we just wanted those few things ironed out. So I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
I was basically going to say what Dana said. I don't believe Ms. Ford was at the last meeting where that was exactly what the discussion was. We did a first read and we didn't vote on it so that Dr. Will it would have the time to make the adjustments because these things change and move. Um, so that we would have an accurate, an up to date document to discuss and vote on tonight. That was the point of having it on board action.
Yeah, and it does take time to parse through it because I won't get responses to everything when I ask. Some of these bills, even though they didn't pass, there were, there are little parts of them that get stuck in other places. So to take, you know, again, that TRS, teacher retirement system piece, even though that one bill failed, they, they tucked section one seventeen into sixty four ninety one. That still exists. And by the way, they're not funding it. They're relying on the fact that there were, you know, bonds in the past. They kind of artificially inflate the contribution, which means that, and there has been some talk of this, that could end up someday being on the municipal side. You know, when they're asking you to take a percentage of the teacher retirement board impacts. And so that's why that's relevant, but it got, it got nested. And this is what happens at the end of the term. These get nested in other bills. And so it's tricky and you have to make sure that you're being accurate about.
That's okay. Then we're going to do a vote.
Uh, thanks guys for continuing to point out where I'm wrong. I appreciate it. Just in the future, with the board packet, I think we got it, the revised agenda yesterday. I just printed out the board packet and read what was in there and did my homework. So, um. Sorry, I missed the dashboard post, but I think, I mean, I think the letter should be public anyway. But thank you.
Okay, um, let's go ahead and do a roll call vote. Jaden?
Aye.
Aye.
Lauren?
Nay.
Hey Dana?
Aye.
Uh, aye as well, therefore with majority, we are okay with this letter. Now I'm just going to go through the board members and just see if you would like to sign your name. So Jaden, would you like to sign your name?
Absolutely.
Jen?
Yes.
Sophia?
Yes.
Uh, Dana?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Obviously, uh, Ford said no about the letter. So I'm assuming that you are a no for signing your name as well. Lauren?
Uh, no, you can leave my name on. Thank you.
Perfect. Okay, so if you can get, um.
Lisa, I'll need to get into the, tell me if you said yes now here and we'll reach out to those who are not.
More not here. Perfect.
Yeah, and then, and you know, again, it's in the email from this, I think earlier today, and you know, and yes, this is definitely posted. We'll call it.
I thought it was stupid, but I thought I covered. With it tonight, guys. Okay, um, let's go to the, I don't know. The THS class of nineteen seventy six donations.
Right, some good names. Um, THS classes nineteen seventy six wants to give. Five hundred and I think it's sixty dollars to the, um, you know, to the SAA account for, uh, for the high school. To be utilized in the student activity fund to enrich the lives of THS students. So anything over five hundred has to be, you know, has to be recognized by the superintendent, um, and acknowledged by the superintendent, which I did. I wanted to bring it to your attention just so we could say thank you to the class nineteen seventy six for, you know, for providing funds to our current students. It's just a, it's a kindness and want to make sure that that was, uh, you know, that was recognized. Uh, and so the rest of the language is, is that's here is just, uh, you know, from that policy, what we have to consider when somebody makes a donation. There's no restrictions, it's suitable use, you know, it's not inappropriate or harmful, will not imply endorsement of the business, will not conflict. With provisions of the school code of law, et cetera. And of course, this donation.
No, this is great because the student activity fund goes toward the enrichment, different programs that they have throughout. I mean, you know, they have like drummers own play. I know, I heard sometime they had Chucky's come to visit the kindergarten. We should look into that. Um, but yes, so this is great. So thank you to the class of nineteen seventy six. I'm sure at some point we will hear about what it would to report. I'm sure there's probably some programs that we have to cut because of the financial situation, so.
Yeah, and you know, it'll, it'll help the kids do more than they might have otherwise been able to in the student activities really is what we do. Lots of their costs.
Okay, that's even better.
Yeah.
Even better. Very nice. Okay, let's go to obsolete and surplus equipment.
All right, this is a, you know, a pretty regular thing that's been coming up. When we do have things come for obsolete and surplus equipment, I'd put it up as soon as I could get them. And then we just keep a regular, uh, now, a regular effort to keep moving things through. Sometimes these things are textbooks, textbooks get out of date where they're no longer part of, um, you know, our current programming. And so we do have math textbooks that are not part of the bridge's programming and are not compatible with what we're doing. They also tend to not align with the testing. And when, you know, you can't use a text that doesn't align with testing, it's a bad idea because the kids fall. You know, they won't learn that, the concepts that are, that are tested. And so that, that's not well. Food and nutrition services. We have not used the slicer, the make globe. That is the TIS warmer or the crescent core. Those are being recommended that they're in bad condition and no longer usable. And the food service is going to surplus them to the town for whatever the town would like to do with them. Uh, THS, you know, Genesis water distillation units, apparently they're quite old and not working. Uh, we're not working to what we need them to. You know, the barns that thermal oil, the bio rad incubator, it sounds like something from Back to the Future here. But anything being, um, and being surplus means that the district doesn't have use for it, it usually isn't working. The town gets to decide what it wants to do with these, uh, if they want to sell them, if they want to trash them and so on. So it goes into a town's consideration, you know, um, some of the items like that car that was recently surplus, they have an ordinance about that. They, you know, have a way of handling it.
Do we know what they got for the?
I don't, I don't, but I do know a gentleman was really interested in the cranberry cruiser for quite some time. So I hope he got it because he was really, really interested. But we'll see, you know, I, I don't know, I didn't know how that ended, but, um. So heat press, dry mounting press, printing dryer, Zepson stylus, three hole punch, apparently. Three hole punches at ACES twenty eleven, which doesn't run anything, DVDs, VCRs. You know, a language lab workstation, which is also quite old and damaged, operate fruit piano.
If you want to go to the motion, I will entertain the motion that is both, we'll scroll up that was in the top area. There you go. I will entertain this motion if anybody would like to make it.
Motion to declare the attached items below as obsolete and turn the items over to the town in accordance with the Board of Education policy thirty forty. Sophia Shay second.
Any discussion about the warmer or whatever it was made.
Any guesses what that is?
Something with the word slicer in it, if it's old.
Whatever food thing definitely is.
Okay. Um, then we'll go ahead and do a roll call votes. Some members complained, so we'll start. John?
Aye.
Lauren?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
I'm a aye as well, therefore these will be a nice gift to the town.
Okay.
Okay, FRC grant.
So, uh, this comes around every, I think, two, three years and essentially. It's simply a process of you saying, yes, we would like to do the, you know, you want me to continue to do the FRC grant. The FRC grant is, uh, it usually, and it depends on, um, you know, certain factors, but we usually get quite a lot of, uh, money from the FRC grant from the state. It helps offset the FRC program. Uh, it helps make the FRC program even more valuable to the district. Um, the FRC has a positive balance right now, um, and the state, you know, support of that is, is a part of that picture. FRC provides graduated, uh, confidence, you know, not graduate compensation, we graduated rates for individuals who, uh, you know, who are in more need. They pay less, individuals in less need pay more. Um, and so it's important that we continue with our FRC grants and we can continue to provide programming for all the families in town that. Needed and that we can help them, you know, based on their economic level accordingly and appropriately. So when it comes back around, I just need to make sure that the Board of Ed is, is okay with us continuing to pursue this.
And you do need this due to the timeline.
Yeah, I mean, this one is really just, we get money from this, guys. When I come to you for a grant, usually it's just if you, you say yes. Sometimes you can say yes and we might not get it, but I can't even sometimes go for it unless you say yes, you know, go for it.
Um, I'll entertain the motion on here. If you'd like to read it.
Uh, make motion to approve the grant application package for the renewal of the family resource center program.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on this?
Yeah, I would just like to say that the FRC program is such a wonderful, wonderful preschool and daycare program. And I know so many people who have, um, used it, um, relied on it, um, with my kids, um, some classes for it too. So anything we can do to continue to fund and, and keep this program is, is amazing, I think, for family.
What else? Okay, um, we'll just do the roll call. Jaden?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, Ford?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
I'm a aye as well, therefore this matters as is. Okay, let's go to public participation. Yeah, would you get through the timeline? Yeah, so. The vote for participation, you'll get two minutes. If you could, please put your name and address for the record. And then you'll have two minutes, but it needs to be comments made on the items on the agenda. So essentially anything under the forward action, um, section is what we can discuss and you'll have two minutes. As I said, please list your name and address for the record. If you're in the room, you can come up and I will pick you up. If you're online, please raise your hand. We're ready to go.
Yeah, ready to go.
Okay.
Can I say my name and address?
Yep, okay.
Rebecca Yarutia, seventy two Pepperwood Road. And my question is about the suspected abuse document. And mandated reporter training. Is there mandated reporter training for. For substitute teachers and for student teachers, either mandated reporter training and or safe environments training? I have been wondering about that.
You have two minutes to talk and then we can talk about it.
Okay, no, keep talking. Um, I've actually spoken with, um, I've actually spoken with substitute teachers who confirmed that there was no training. And that concerned me because then, in fact, a few, a few substitute teachers that I spoke with. Said that they were told that the school system just needed warm bodies, which. I understand that there was a dire need for substitutes at that time, so that probably was a. Probably not so great way of saying that, but, um, but they indicated that there was not any kind of training required of them. And, um, and we had an incident this year with a student teacher where they were warned several times about crossing boundaries with. Students in the class that my son was part of. And when we expressed our concern. They had, the, the principal told us that there had already been several instances where boundaries were questioned. Of that student teacher. So it just made me wonder, is, is this something that our district would have to have in place? Or is that something that their own college programs would have to have in place for student teachers? Um, and could they be added to this document where mandated reporter training would be applied to them? Or some, or some kind of safe environments training for our district? Thank you.
Anyone online at this time, can you raise your hand? Anyone else online would like to raise their hand and have two minutes, please do so now. Okay, going once. Okay, going once, going twice. Okay, we're going to close out the public participation. Liz, okay, Liz. Oh, I can't even hear, I think she's talking.
Oh, I I can't hear.
Liz, we are not able to hear you.
Sorry, hello, everyone.
Oh, I can't even hear. Name and address, please.
Hi, sorry about that.
Sorry.
Can you hear me?
Hello, everyone.
Go ahead, name and address.
Name and add.
Sorry about that, hello, fifty four Josiah Lane. I just want to thank Mr. Poland and Mrs. Marinin for giving our students such a great graduation week with the walk through the school, with all the different events. It was really, really touching for both parents, I think, teachers from what I've heard of who were in some of the schools that the students visited. It was just a really cool week and a great graduation speaker, just amazing graduation speaker and the valedictorian salutatorian speeches were amazing. And I just want to thank both Dr. Willitt, Mr. Poland, and Mrs. Marinin and Mr. McCluskey for what they did, so thank you.
Go ahead, I will, once again, let anybody else at case later do it in time and then I'm really going to close it up. So if you would like to speak online, please click now. Raise your hand. Okay, seeing none, I am going to officially close this out and we can go to points of information. In regards to your question, I know when I was a para sub, I had to do the online training and I had to print out the certificate and give it to the, because I actually had to do DCI, I actually had to put a claim too, because I know it was a mandated reporter and the situation had occurred that I actually I had to go and do that. But it was literally like an online course that you had to do, it wasn't anything. Well, but I did have to do it in order to submit our. Did anything change?
Well, I'll have to look into what Mr. Willitt is asking about. I know we do background checks, there's, there are, you know, battery things people go through, even our volunteers, you know, go through a battery in our background check and things like that. I don't know specifically about the student teacher piece you're speaking of, so maybe I'll find out, I'll talk to you about it or ask about it. Usually things rise to my level if there's some something that, you know, was was a major violation that we had to take action on. So I don't recall any respect to that at this time, but I'm sure we could find more information. And then, of course, I'll be happy to help any way I can. And so, you know, maybe during COVID, I don't, I'm not sure what the sentiments or feelings are. Certainly during COVID, districts were, you know, not looking for any warm body, but the state of Connecticut allowed for kids that, you know, young adults without, I think, you know, with, it opened up the door to a much broader group of people to be able to substitute. And so some of that remained and it remains in the state of Connecticut, frankly. And so that doesn't mean that in terms of we take any warm body, we certainly don't. But but to 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 respond to the comment about, you know, there there being kind of in the last few years, people looking for subs and needing to find subs, you know, the state did open that up. So then kids that were coming back from Yukon, you know, were able to sub that weren't able to sub before and that didn't happen. Now, we didn't, you know, and I'm using Yukon as example, across all central, every place, districts were bringing back kids that had graduated in some cases, having them work in the younger schools where there's an age difference. So so there were more opportunities to access different populations for subs. Having said that, our district is is very stringent about who we take. We we do screen people, we do make sure that, you know, they have background checks. We do reject subs and and I, you know, I regularly reject subs based on information that, you know, comes up that I don't, you know, we don't feel would be acceptable in an education environment. So there is a screening process. The state of Connecticut did allow for larger groups of people to be considered so possible for submitting.
Well, good, I totally realize that you have the executive session in between that, but we shouldn't have a place for the issue, so we are going to handle that now. Um, if there is nothing else, then we will, I need a motion to enter into the executive session for the purpose of the superintendent evaluation, inviting Dr. Willitt in. If anybody would like to make that, that would be great. Second, any further discussion? I just would like to, we have to do the vote, but just to make sure that our participants online, you have to keep your cameras on while we do that, so.
Also, just as we enter executive session, ladies and gentlemen, those of you who are in the audience will be put into the waiting room, so that's what will be happening next, just so you know, you know, the.
After we vote.
That Zoom waiting room after the vote.
We'll do the roll call vote, go ahead.
Right.
Aye.
Aye.
Lauren?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
I'm an I as well, therefore we will enter into the executive session at eight forty one, inviting Dr. Willitt.